I would like to call to order the November fourteenth Regular Board Meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome. The first order of business is item one dot two, Adoption of the Agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into item two dot one, Student Recognition of the National Merit Semi-Finalists and Scholars, and Sarah, I'll welcome you to the podium to introduce.
Thank you very much. Super exciting night. We have lots of kids here that we're going to be recognizing, and I am thrilled and to have the honor of introducing the National Merit Scholars, commended and finalists that we have in our district this year. We have eleven semifinalists for the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program, and these eleven finalists join about sixteen thousand students nationally competing for scholarships in this highly competitive program. Joining the eleven semifinalists are twenty commended scholars from the Moundsview Public Schools. We are excited that some of them are willing to join us this evening and introduce themselves, so I'm going to have the students come on up here one at a time, and if you wouldn't mind sharing your name, the high school you're from, and then if you have any future plans, we'd love to hear about it. So, come on up, National Merit Scholars.
Hi, my name is Maya Arnold. I'm a senior at Moundsview High School, and I'm hoping intending to major in engineering. I'm not quite sure yet, but hopefully Columbia, so we'll see.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Come and just stand right over here. There you go. Great, thank you.
Hello, my name is Victor Kai, and I'm from Moundsview High School, and I plan to major in Computer Science, hopefully at Cornell.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hi, my name's Siri Wilkes. I go to Moundsview High School. I'm thinking about majoring in math with a focus in biology and probably at the University of Minnesota.
Congratulations.
My name is Katie Schneider from Moundsview. I'm hoping to study economics with a concentration in public policy. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Ellen. I'm from Moundsview, and I'm hoping to major in engineering in college.
Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Elijah England from Irondale, and I'm planning on majoring in neuroscience, hopefully at MIT.
Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Mia. I'm from Irondale, and I'm hoping to major in political science at colleges on the East Coast.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Truly an impressive group. Will you please join me in congratulating these students on their accomplishments? And now we'll welcome up Mr. Fink, who's going to be talking about athletics and activities.
And Mr. Fink, I understand you are helping out this evening for Mr. Galvin as well.
Yes, Mr. Galvin had a very important evening ahead of him, so. I get the privilege tonight to represent both schools, and it's always nice when you get to see the kids across the district have so much success and basically have a really good opportunity and have great cultures within their programs. It's just nice to talk to kids from Moundsview High School, Irondale High School. You know, they're all our kids, they're all together, so it's kind of fun. So tonight we have a couple cross-country programs, two drama programs, our marching band, and our swim team. Am I forgetting anything, kids? I think that's good, so I'll let the kids take over from here.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Sam.
Hi, I'm Zoe. We are seniors at Irondale, and we are here to tell you about our fall musical, which was Beauty and the Beast. I hope, I saw some of you guys there, I know for sure, so thank you all for coming. Yeah, it was a really, really successful show. We sold out, we only didn't sell thirteen tickets out of our six hundred and fifty-seat auditorium for four nights, so really awesome, great reviews, everyone loved it. We had lots of little kids in little Belle dresses coming to take pictures with Belle and the Beast after the shows. It was very cute and very sweet.
And we also had our four flyers, which was super awesome, that we were able to get four people up in the air. Everybody got super excited about that. They're up there right now, and it was just a really great cast vibe together this year, and we're grateful that this got to be our senior show.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, we're from the Irondale Marching Band. I'm Natalie.
I'm Mia. You just met me.
And this past year, our program basically doubled in size from the past couple of years that we've been in marching band. Yeah, we had about a hundred and forty students this year, and the past three years, we had around seventy, so that was very, very impressive.
Yeah, it was an amazing year. This year, we got to compete at the Bands of America Competition, the regional competition in Wisconsin. So we went there in September, and we ended up getting Class Two A Champions for the region. It's very exciting.
Excellent.
Yeah, and then also, we competed in the Youth and Music State Championship, and for the third year in a row, we got first place in Class Three A. Yeah.
Great year.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Lulu.
And I'm Sarah, and I'm a diver for the Irondale Swim and Dive Team, and this year has just been full of many accomplishments for the dive team. I was able to break the school record, which I've been striving for since freshman year, so that was amazing. My teammates have grown so much this year, and watching them grow has just been so cool, and my coaches have been amazing, and yeah.
So yeah, I'm Sarah. I'm the captain of the Swim and Dive Team, and our program has grown a lot this year. We've had the most amount of rookies we've ever had, and we have also had the most amount of people go to sections, and we even had two rookies go to sections, so that's been really great, and everyone has had massive time drops or PRs this entire season, and it's just been so great to watch everyone grow.
Great job. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Anya.
And I'm Emily. And we're seniors and captains of the Moundsview Girls Cross Country Team. We had, we are really lucky to have a really successful season. We had over forty girls come out of our team, with a lot of them being freshmen, even some middle schoolers joined, so that was really fun to see, and we just spent a lot of time this season working on our team culture, becoming a team, caring for our teammates, and that really showed at our state meet when only seven girls ran, but most of the team showed up to support and cheer on their teammates.
We also finished our season as conference and section champions, and then again finished fourth at state. We like to correlate our success this season to like our, like when we run, we like to just think about our teammates and, you know, think about something bigger than ourselves, and so we think that's part of our success as a team, and yeah.
That's great. Congratulations.
Excellent.
Hi, I'm Kayden. I'm a senior and captain, one of the captains of the Boys Cross Country Team. So, we like to say that the tradition of excellence continues, and this year it sure did, so we won our seventh straight section title. We were conference champions over our rival Stillwater, and then we finished top five in the state for the seventh year in a row, and we podiumed again with a third-place finish. And in addition to our older guys running well, the first-ever middle-school state meet, our guys placed sixth, which is a really nice thing to see. You know, it always shows great program depth when not only your older guys run well, but your younger guys could show up and get the job done. So with such great young guys, such great depth in the team, Moundsview Cross Country will be looking good for the next couple of years. Thank you.
Great. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Erin.
And my name is Anya.
And we're representing the Moundsview Fall Play, the Curious Savage. So I wanted to start with talking about a community outreach that we were fortunate enough to start this year. It's something that we've always strived to do, but with the help of our new director, Mr. Van Brugen, we were able to actually apply it, as well as help from our amazing Bravo Team, which is our booster club, and we were able to collect fifty toys for Operation Joy, run through the Ralph Reader food shelf, as well as sixty dollars in virtual bears that also goes towards like funds for, for toys going towards children in need. We were as well-attended as we were in last year's Fall Play, and we did as well as our admittedly aging auditorium could provide us. And our next shows will be Shakespeare's The Comedy of Errors in the winter, and then Cinderella in the spring.
Yeah, I'm Anya Horseman, and I played Ethel P. Savage in the production of the Curious Mrs. Savage. This was really an incredible experience, and it was, I would say, better than the last show, and throughout all departments, there was a better sense of community than I feel like there ever has been in theater, and this show really told the beautiful story of showing the impact of kindness in a world of greed and dishonesty, and all of the students, teachers, and parents in this production made it so much better, and yeah.
We're really grateful for being able to put this show on for everyone.
Wonderful. Nice job. Great show.
So we had two more National Merit Scholars sneak in, and I didn't know it, so I'm going to have these two young men come up, and can you introduce yourselves and tell us any future plans you may have, or not have?
Sure. Hi, my name is Michael. I was one of the National Merit Semi-Finalists this year, and future plans-wise, I don't know. I guess I just want to go to college. I actually just got from here from a college interview, so that's pretty interesting.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And I am a National Merit Semi-finalist from Irondale, and I am hoping to get a mechanical engineering degree at Bethel, in addition to like one or two others that are like one class away, and then get a job at that point, and yeah.
Congratulations. So does that include all of our scholars and activities? Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for being here, and congratulations for all of your efforts, whether it was academic or activity. We are all so proud of you and your accomplishments, and you're more than welcome to stay, as Jonathan Weinhegan would say, but I'm sure that you have much more important things to do. So thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to two dot three, Student Representative Reports. I see Alton in the background from Moundsview. Do we have anyone? Oh, right here. Wonderful, from Irondale. Perfect. So is Irondale kicking it off tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, live or live, so. Okay, so this past week, in celebration of Latino Heritage Month, we had a community celebration that was completely student-run and organized, including a Spirit Week and a Heritage Showcase on last Thursday in our cafeteria that included food and dance performances, and it was just a really great example of the students at Irondale coming together to show something that they wanted to celebrate and that they were passionate about, and it was a lot of fun.
And then some more general Irondale updates. Our debate team has been having great levels of success. Three of our teams have had perfect records over the past two tournaments, and there's just been a lot of excitement, especially with that being one of our newer clubs as it was started last year. So everybody is really excited to cheer on our debate team at their tournament this Saturday. We did do our annual Student Council Food Drive, Tricker Canning, where we go out into the community and ask for donations, and we got a thousand and forty-three pounds of food this year, which is over three hundred more pounds than we got last year. Then our NHS did a blood drive, which was, got everybody super excited, even if they couldn't donate to get their blood type, so we're excited to have them donate at future blood drives. And then our winter sports season is starting up. Obviously, you heard about a lot of our successful activities already that came from our fall season, but we have some of our tryouts this week, and Robotics is launching their season, as well as Speech, so we're just super excited to see all the coming activities and involvement. So I just have a few pictures from our blood drive, and some of our debate kids hard at work at one of their tournaments, and then the pictures on the right are us this morning dropping off our donations at Ralph Reader, and yeah, our two committee heads for our Tricker Canning Committee did a fantastic job, and we got really great success in all of this stuff, and then all of our activities that we were talking about earlier.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I think it's on the same slide, right? Yep. Click one more.
Oh, okay. There we go. So, again, my name is Alton. I'm from Moundsview, and I just want to reiterate what the other clubs said. We have overall a successful fall sports season at Moundsview. As Kayden mentioned, cross-country placed well, both girls and boys. Some sports that I want to highlight that weren't represented tonight, our girls' swim and dive team competed in state last Saturday, I believe, and they had five athletes placed in the top eight, and I believe they're sending two, I'm not state, sorry, sections, and they're sending two athletes to state this week, and girls' tennis also had a great season. They placed, I believe, fifth at state, and they sent two athletes to the semi-quarterfinals for doubles. Sorry, that's a mouthful. Overall, our sports, as they said, very successful this season, and our next thing on the agenda is Student Council. Our big event in October is our Capital Division Fall Conference, and as I stated last month, this is basically an event where numerous schools from the Twin Cities, Student Councils come and meet, and we have a speaker talk to us. She talked about how it is important for Student Councils to act as leaders and really connect with students, make students want to go to school beyond just education, fostering connection and building community, and I think it's a really good value to instill in Student Council, especially because our Student Council also has a lot of freshmen, so I believe that it is important to instill those values in them so they can carry it on throughout high school. We also had a time where we collaborated with the Student Councils, shared ideas of what our school does, what their schools does. I think it's important to know kind of just like what everybody does so we can get new ideas into our Student Councils, and then the best part is we had pizza for lunch, and that was really good. As we reiterated earlier, we had our Fall Play, the Curious Savage. Overall, it was a great show, actors, cast, costuming, put a lot of work into it, and as I stated again, Operation Joy, the tour drive, successful as well, and we can't wait for the Shakespeare play, or Shakespeare production of The Comedy of Errors. And I also want to mention one of our clubs, it's called Students Demand Action. They're hosting a blanket drive for women advocacy group for women who survive domestic abuse, and will be collecting blankets and pillows and all sorts of stuff. I believe it's a good cause that they're supporting, and yeah, that's all pizza from Moundsview. Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all for being here this evening and for the updates, great things going on at your school. Again, you're welcome to stay, or otherwise you can continue on with your evenings.
Thank you. Have a good night. You too. Thank you.
So we'll move into item two dot four, Announcements, and we'll start with the gifts. Shauna, could you please read?
Yes, thank you, Diane. There were nineteen gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of three thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars and forty-five cents, and there were fifteen gifts received for the Ralph Reader food shelf this period for a total of twenty-one thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars and seven cents. It is recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Thank you, Shauna. Upcoming meetings, we have a work session on Thursday, December seventh, at five PM. We also have our annual truth and taxation readout at six PM, and then the next regular meeting of the school board will be that same night, December twelfth, at seven PM, here at the District Center. So two dot five, we'll move on to the Superintendent Report, so Superintendent Lennox.
Great, thanks, Diane. With all the super, or the recognition for students tonight, usually that's much of what I would, would report on, but the public got to see that live. It's just always so fun to have the kids. So the one other thing I wanted to highlight, at the other end of our learning continuum, last Saturday, our Community Education Program hosted an event for our youngest learners and families, an event called the Frosty Ball. Now, that event was held at Moundsview High School and attracted over two hundred parents and their children. Activities included dancing to a DJ, photo booth, a bouncy house, balloon art, and there were popcorn snacks and cotton candy for everyone, so it was incredible. By all accounts, they said a rousing success. They already have plans in the works to expand it for next year. If you're watching this at home and you or your family missed that particular event or couldn't attend, have no fear. Community Ed is going to be there for you. Their Early Childhood Parent Advisory Council already planning the annual Valentine's Day Dance in February, and if you watch, for additional information, there are many more other fun, family-filled activities on the docket that will be taking place throughout the school year. So just congratulations to all the wonderful things happening, super fun event for our early childhood and youngest staff, and congrats again to all the kids we were able to see tonight and recognize them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to item three dot zero, Approval of the Consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carry. Next up, four dot one, Ratification of Employment Contracts, and we would like to welcome up Julie Coffey, Executive Director of Human Resources. Hi, Julie.
Good evening. I'm very excited to be here tonight to bring forward three contracts. We're going to start with our custodial contract. So we have a tentative agreement with SEIU Local 204. They represent our about a hundred and twenty or so custodians in the district, as well as our buildings and ground staff. This contract is for twenty-three, twenty-five. It's a two-year contract. There's a six-point-two-five percent increase in each year, and then there's some slight increases to longevity. There's a differential for our B and C shift custodians, as well as a slight increase in our boiler license pay. And then we also increased the contribution to the four R three B effective in year two. So tonight, we're asking for approval of the twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-five custodial agreement.
And just so I understand correctly, we need to vote for each one of these.
Correct.
Like each. Okay, perfect. Any questions for Julie? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two-five custodial agreement.
So moved.
Second.
The custodial agreement has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So moving on now to the teacher labor agreement.
Yep, so we have a tentative agreement with the Moundsview Education Association for the twenty-three, twenty-five contract. With this contract, as with custodians, we really look at the salaries in comparison to local districts, and we want to make sure the board has set some parameters, that we try to be mid-range. As we looked across other districts this year, we realized that our teacher contract was lagging a little bit, and so we worked with the union and really did some work to try to get those salaries up so that we can recruit, as well as retain, the great teachers that we have. So this contract has a six percent increase in year one, a ten percent in year two, and again, that's really to help market adjust those rates to keep us competitive. And then there wasn't too much else that we agreed on. Salary-wise, as a small increase to the fourth would be in year two, an increase in the stipend for our national board-certified teachers, and then we have a, what we call our Schedule C, it's all of our extracurricular stipends, that was increased three percent in each year. So tonight, we're looking for approval for the twenty-three, twenty-five teacher labor agreement.
All right. Any questions?
Not a question, but I guess I just want to comment for folks who might be watching that this board has had a number of closed sessions to talk about our labor negotiations over the past several months. So although, you know, we're voting rather quickly tonight, the work has been happening behind closed doors, which is what we, what we have to do when we're negotiating contracts for, for several months. So Julie, thank you. I know you pointed out that these contracts are mid-range, which is the publicly stated goal of the school board as to how we seek to settle our labor contracts across all bargaining units, so just wanted to make that comment.
Yes, thank you, Sandra.
I should say too, for our teacher group, and because Stacy's sitting in the back.
So although, you know, we're voting rather quickly tonight, the work has been happening behind closed doors, which is what we have to do when we're negotiating contracts for several months. So Julie, thank you. I know you pointed out that these contracts are mid-range, which is the publicly stated goal of the school board as to how we seek to settle our labor contracts across all bargaining units. So just wanted to make that comment.
Yes, thank you, Sandra.
I should say too, for our teacher group and because Stacy's sitting in the back, we spent a very significant amount of time. One day, we spent over 10 hours just going through language and really trying to clean up old language, move some MOUs that we had into the body of the contract or eliminate things. And so we spent a lot of time this round really trying to clean that up. And I think it has resulted in a much easier to read contract that I'm sure people will appreciate.
Thank you. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the 2023 to 2025 teacher labor agreement.
So moved.
Second.
The agreement has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto nutrition services.
So our last agreement tonight is with the Moundsview Nutrition Services Association. They represent about 70 nutrition services staff throughout the district. This contract also covers 2023-25. And each year, there's a 5.75% increase year one, 4% year two. This group really wanted to take a look at their longevity. And so they really spent quite a bit of time trying to work on a longevity schedule and payment that worked for the nutrition services staffs. So there are some fairly significant changes in their longevity amounts. And then they also have some certification pay that was increased slightly as well. And then an increase in the VEPAR contribution, really just to make them comparable to all of our other groups in the district. So tonight, we're asking for approval for the 2325 nutrition services labor agreement.
All right. So I entertain a motion to approve the 2023-2025 nutrition services labor agreement.
So moved.
Second.
The agreement has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Julie, and thank you to Bernice as well. She was unable to be with us tonight, but I know a lot of hours have gone into this and we truly appreciate it. And congratulations to these groups having their contract ratified for the next couple of years. So, all right. Next up, 2020-23-24 Quarterly Budget Report and Amendments. And as I mentioned, Bernice is unable to be with us this evening. So Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. Tonight, you do have in front of you a budget report amendment for the first quarter of this school year. As board members, you know, this is ongoing work for our finance team as they continue to track expenditures throughout the year. This information formally comes to the board every quarter so that we can be sure that all of our budgets remain aligned and accurate. So during the first quarter of this year, the district reflected an increase in revenue of $114,246.79. This is attributed really to building generated accounts that were taking in the associated donations, gifts, fees at the start of the school year. So that money was all in inflow. Our finance team now has gone through and adjusted building budgets to recognize that new revenue and also then align their expenditures to that same amount so that they are in alignment moving forward. So at this time, administration is recommending the school board approve this first quarter budget amendment as presented.
All right. Any questions? All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented. So moved.
Second.
The amendment has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. So we will leave it in Chris's court. And 4.3, canvas votes.
Following an election, it is the responsibility of the school board to accept and approve an abstract of all votes cast as part of that election. In your meeting materials, you have a copy of the abstract that was provided to the school district from Ramsey County Elections. At this time, it is recommended that the board accept that abstract from Ramsey County and approve it as presented in your materials.
Great. I would entertain a motion to approve the abstract of votes cast as present.
Move to approve.
Second. The abstract of votes cast has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we will leave it in Chris's court and we will be discussing resolution issue certificates of election.
Yep, so these two items go together. Now that the abstract of votes has been approved, the board needs to adopt a resolution to extend certificates of election to the four candidates that received the most votes. Those candidates were Heidi Danielson, Jim DeMay, Jonathan Weinhegen, and Alyssa Dare Nelson. At this time, it is recommended that the board adopt the resolution to execute those certificates of elections to those four candidates.
Great. I would entertain a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
So moved.
Second.
The attached resolution has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So we'll be moving on to item 5.1, 2022-23 Student Achievement Equity Promise Highlights. And we would like to welcome up Angie Peschel, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Mary Staub, Director of Research Assessment and Evaluation.
That's a mouthful.
It is.
Welcome. Great, thanks. So tonight, we're here to present progress on the world's best workforce and our achievement integration plan. This annual report will focus on the 22-23 school year. So Minnesota state legislation mandates a district develop a plan to support and improve teaching and learning and that is aligned to creating the world's best workforce. So there are five areas that they ask us to create a strategic plan around. And we're here tonight to talk about those five areas, our progress on those goals, and then strategies we have around them. So we'll talk to you about all students meeting school readiness goals, all students in third grade achieving grade level literacy, all students graduate from high school, all students attain college and career readiness, and then close the achievement gaps for all students. So we'll present on each of these five areas.
So our presentation tonight will include, as Angie said, the goal that we had set for this 22-23 school year, the results of that goal, the strategies we used last year. And then if applicable, we'll tell you how we're responding in this school year as well. So the goal for all students ready for school was that the percentage of pre-kindergarten age four students enrolled in our Moundsview Early Childhood Program would meet or exceed the kindergarten readiness benchmark of accomplished for the social emotional domain as measured by our Observation Protocol My Teaching Strategies Assessment. The social emotional domain contains three objectives. The ones they were looking to observe and support students in their learning is on regulating their own emotions and behaviors, establishing and sustaining a positive relationship with their peers, and participating cooperatively and constructively in group situations. We consider this goal met as 77% of the grade age four students met the readiness of accomplished. That's a 4% increase from the previous year.
So some of the strategies in place that allow us to meet those goals were increasing efforts to have families complete the early childhood screening as they come into our system. It helps us to build connections with families and students and then ensure that we have supports in place to support those students as they come to us. Also, they worked on creating a leadership team of teachers at the early childhood center that were able to help support making instructional decisions for students. And then also facilitate transitions for families and students from early childhood programs to kindergarten. So as we think about that goal for next year, we're continuing with those strategies that we have in place. We found them to be beneficial. As Mary said, we met that goal. And then we are responding by also having, as you know, there's a district operating goal around this area. We are gathering information from our communities to help us better understand the experiences for our families and students in our pre-K programming. And then we'll plan accordingly around that. And then also they're restructuring the work of their professional learning communities with the teachers at our early child, who've had a lot of success in our traditional schools around that. So early childhood is adapting a lot of those strategies as well. Yes.
If I could just jump in here, I just want to point out the, I'm looking at the spring 2021, you know, percentage of that achieved, that benchmark at 67% compared to spring of 2023 at 77%. That is a significant increase. And I just think it's really amazing, you know, we all know that kids, especially the youngest kids, were really impacted with the pandemic and the learning. And this, I'm just really pleased to see that we're, we've made some progress here and significant progress.
Absolutely, great. Thank you for that.
All right, we'll move on to the second goal. All students in third grade achieve grade level literacy.
So the percentage of grade three students at Moundsview Public Schools who are proficient in MCA reading, the hope was to increase from 53.4% in 2022 to 56% in 2023. The actual result in 2023 was 50.8%, which was down 2.6%. So we consider that goal was not met. And we'd like to share some of the strategies that we have in place for responding to that.
So in the spring of '22, we realized that our students were presenting some needs and some foundational literacy skills that were not being met. So as early as spring of '22, we knew that we need to increase the professional development for our teachers to really give them the skills so that they could present those foundational skills to their students in meaningful ways to address that. So we started that work last year. And part of that was focusing on six shifts that helped bring the science of reading into the balanced literacy classrooms that we have in our system. So that has been one strategy that we've had in place. We also expanded the use of progress monitoring tools to ensure instructional strategies met the needs of students. This allows teachers to have more real-time data and then respond in meaningful ways to what they were seeing. Professional development, especially to our intermediate teachers, so these are grades four and five teachers. Typically, they have not been, not needed to focus on those foundational literacy skills. But as a result of the pandemic, as you mentioned, Sandra, we're seeing students who are still, there's still some gaps in that learning. And so really building the capacity of our teachers to provide instruction in those foundational skills for students in grades four and five as well. Differentiate instruction is the key to doing this work. And then we have also provided some in addition to time for literacy instruction to support students who need additional support. So this is supporting classroom, you know, in their classroom getting that instruction. And then they also are getting instruction from intervention teachers. So we're not happy with these results as we look at them. We know that there is work to be done in this area. And so some of the ways that we are responding to this is by continuing to focus on the strategies that I mentioned above. And we are seeing some initial success as a result of those strategies and some fall data. So in grades one through three, we've been able to administer some early literacy screeners for students. And what we're seeing is in grades one through three, we are seeing an improvement in students and their proficiency levels fall this year compared to fall last year. So we're seeing students bounce back. It didn't show up in the MCAs last year, but we are seeing it in the fall as a result of some of those strategies. We are expanding on those six shifts around balanced literacy. We are preparing to meet the requirements of the READ Act that came out of the legislation, the last legislative session. And what that means is a couple of different areas. So three screeners have been approved by MDE. And we are looking at those screeners to make determinations about which one we will use starting next year. MDE has also approved three professional development vendors that we, all of our teachers will be required to attend. And so we are looking at those three vendors right now to see which one best fits our system. And then we are anticipating Minnesota Department of Education, they will be delivering to us five core resources that we could use for literacy instruction. They'll present that to us in January. And then we'll have some work to do to look at those five different resources that are out there and see which one will best fit us. So that's all work we're continuing to do that will definitely impact this goal as well.
Absolutely. The third goal, all students career and college ready by graduation. We look at our success of our students on our ACT, College and Career Readiness Benchmarks. We look to see that they're meeting at least three or four of the benchmarks that have been established in the domains of English, math, reading, and science. Our measurement was to increase that from 45% to 50%. Our actual result went up 1% to 46%. So you can also see in the results tonight that we've included our average composite score for the class of 2023, that was 21.9. So that stayed the same from the previous year. A celebration is that we did not see that happen in Minnesota and across the nation. So to continue to stay strong in that average composite score is a win.
Some of the strategies in place to help us achieve this goal, it's the creation of the career and college centers focused on career pathways. I know that's been part of some of the presentations that you've received over the course of last year and even into this year. That focus on career pathways, some college planning, jobs, internships, and support with college applications in the FAFSA. We continue to support students in the aspirations and opportunities that they are striving for as they create three plus one plans with their deans and then also the four-year plan as they move into high school. And then we've really renewed our commitment to supporting students once they have decided to enroll in some of those rigorous courses. We're responding, as you know, it's a district operating goal again, to continue the expansion of that college and career programming that we have. We're looking to identify career interest and exploration software to help students identify earlier what some of their interest areas are and then we can plan accordingly. And then also, we partnered over the last summer with the Carlson School of Management. And they helped us to study the impact of our early college programming. We've got a lot of really great data, a lot of data that we are still calling through right now. And we have plans to make sure that we are summarizing that information for key stakeholders, including deans, families, and students as we learn more about early college programming and how that impacts our students being college and career ready.
Absolutely. As you know, I've always wanted to expand that look at what is happening to our students beyond high school. And the Carlson School of Management was very helpful in looking at data produced by MDE SLED's longitudinal data system to see what were the actual impact to that, the students, once they left our schools in careers as well as in college. All students graduate is the next goal. Moundsview Schools does measure the percent of students who graduate in exactly four years. But we also add to that the percentage of those who continue according to their personalized plan. We believe that many of our students do continue according to that personalized plan to either support them to the age of 22 as our legislation allows. Moundsview Schools' goal was to increase the graduation according to plan rate for all students from 97.8 to 98.0. We actually came in at 97.6, which is a slightly drop, but not significant. What we're most proud of is those individual groups still continue to be above 90%. And some of them made some significant gains over the previous year.
Some of the strategies in place for that are the personalized post-secondary plans for all students, again, using the three plus one and four-year plans for students in grades six through 12. I wanted to highlight also enhanced support for course plans for English learners with limited or interrupted formal education. So as you look at that four-year graduation rate, you'll see that students receiving English learner services at 75%. That's our lowest group that we're looking at there. And so we wanted to be able to really personalize those plans as students come to us. So when students are coming to us from other countries with interrupted learning, we want to make sure that we have a plan in place that helps them meet graduation rates. And so we're able to see that happening as they continue with their, continue with their plan. But we'd like to see that number in the four-year graduation rate increase as well. So really trying to personalize that as we work with deans around that. Transitions are an important part of this goal as well. And then monitoring students and providing academic interventions as needed. And then also that credit recovery. So for those students who need additional time to receive the credit that they need in particular courses, we have multiple and focused ways to support students. So we don't just look at credit recovery as like go to summer school and seat time, but really meaningful work and knowing that they just haven't met those standards yet. And so we've done some really great work around that. And we're seeing results of that in our overall percentages here.
As part of the achievement and integration plan, we do have a goal around all racial and economic achievement gaps being closed. In that particular plan, this goal is focused around mathematics. So increasing the performance of our students with the district common assessments that we administer that are aligned to our MCAs. Unfortunately, this goal was set in 2018 and expired in 2023. And due to the pandemic and the variability of how those district common assessments were used following the pandemic, it would be difficult to determine the results for this goal. So instead, you'll see in the results column that we represent that next level of assessments impacted by this work, the Minnesota Mathematics Accountability Test, the MCAs and the MTAS. And so a modest change was observed from spring 2022 to spring 2023. Our students of color increasing the percent proficient by 1.2%. And the students receiving economic benefits increasing from 4.1%.
So continued work in this area as well. And so some of the things that we have done are really supporting students in need of additional support through some accelerated learning, through a common core resource at our elementary level. So in the past, we haven't had something that's been So in the past, we haven't had something that's been systematic around students who need additional intervention for math, and so we've got a program called Do the Math. We're seeing some great early success with that. It's done outside the classroom in some cases, and in some cases, teachers are able to do that within the classroom as well, so those resources are helping. And another digital resource that we have added is called ST Math, and again, some really strong initial results on that. It's really helping build conceptual understanding for students around math skills, so not just learning the algorithm and the fluency pieces, but also building that conceptual understanding. So that has been very helpful as well. And then we're continuing to implement some best practices as indicated by one of the core texts that our math teachers have been very interested in and really been excited about, building thinking classrooms that is getting students thinking about math in different ways and collaborating in more meaningful ways than just taking notes and then doing homework assignments, but much more meaningful conceptual understandings of that. So we'll continue those strategies and as we continue to work on this goal as well.
The second goal, around all race and economic achievement gaps are closed. It focuses on the opportunities that we provide students to take the rigorous coursework as part of our early college access. In this particular goal, we're asked to decrease the racial and economic participation disparities in Mounds View courses. We have done an incredible job to support students in being part of these opportunities, and so the, this goal was to reduce that below the one percent difference that we see. So in the results, ninety-eight percent of the class of twenty-two participated in rigorous courses, and one of the columns shows then the percent of the, of each demographic category that was part of that class. The second column then shows what percent of that class participated in rigorous courses. So the discrepancies in our Hispanic Latino group is less than one percent, it's point, point seven percent, and our students with economic benefits, it's less than one percent, it's point six percent. So a, a great success seeing the proportionality of students taking advantage of these opportunities, matching the proportionality of the students in our system.
Yeah, great celebrations here, and I would like to point out around this goal, I've got some strategies listed here, but it doesn't just happen at the high school level. That's where students take these courses, but we know that it's the preparation that students are getting in elementary school and middle school that's really preparing them to be ready to take these rigorous college-level courses, and then, yeah, that they, that they believe they can, and they're aspiring to that, so a lot, lot to celebrate there.
I mean, I, I'd just say that the fact that ninety-eight percent of the class of twenty-two participated in a rigorous course is amazing.
And it's proportional. Yeah, that is, yeah, absolutely.
I know some of you have children in that class, and you know what their four years in high school were like, so even to look at those numbers and celebrate the success of those students is really great.
So the World's Best Workforce, ooh, not yet. The World's Best Workforce also requires us to have a process in place to ensure that students from low-income families, students of color, and American Indian students are not taught at a disproportionate rate by inexperienced, out-of-field, and ineffective teachers. So that's the language used in the World's Best Workforce. And so what I wanted to talk to you about before Mary gets into the goal is that first chart on the results side. So the way they define students with experience, they have taught for more than three years. So in Mounds View Public Schools, we have ninety-four percent of our teachers who have taught for more than three years. Another component that they ask us to look at is that they're licensed in the grade or subject area they teach, or they're in field. So we have ninety-eight percent of our teachers who are teaching in their field, and the teachers who have advanced degrees, master's degrees or above, we have seventy-nine percent of our students. So what I need to report to you, and happy to report to you, is that we have found no gaps in this, and that we are meeting that requirement of, of the World's Best Workforce.
The goal for this particular diverse educators, the percent of Mounds View Public School teachers of color would increase from four point seven in two thousand nineteen to six percent in two thousand twenty-three. While we did increase the, the percentage of, of teachers to five point four, we did not meet that goal of six percent, which we had set in two thousand eighteen. I know that you're going to talk about some of the great strategies we have in place around that.
Right, so we've got our Teachers for Tomorrow program and our Educator, Education Scholars Program, as well as the Teach Minnesota program, which we have three teachers who were, that are currently teachers in our system, they were paraprofessionals, and they are being supported through a program through Minnesota Department of Education and a Teach Minnesota grant, and then we also have our Grow Your Own program around future educators. So I think you'll see the, that highlighted in Colin's upcoming School Talk presentation where we'll be able to highlight the, the people that are in that program and the work that they've done around that. So that's what we have for you tonight, as we, yeah, as we complete our, it's, it's November, and we're talking about what happened last year, but what we hope to add tonight was our plans for the future and some next steps as we're moving forward around this work. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
We've had the opportunity to meet with almost every school and, and talk about their goals around academics, belonging, as well as impacting student groups in the last three weeks, and there is continuous improvement to, very evident in our schools with the strategies that our teachers are employing to support all students.
Any questions for Angie or Mary? And we also did a deeper dive of this information this past Thursday at our work session, so thank you very much for preparing that. Yeah.
Just, just one comment I just wanted to make, and you know, we, we didn't hit all the goals, right? And I think that's, that's okay, because what it is, it's we're, we're looking at it, and we're understanding why we didn't hit the goals, and we're setting strategies for moving forward. And I think that, you know, it's kind of, I always say it's the Mounds View way, right? It's, we're a district of continuous improvement, and we're always, we don't rest on our laurels, we're always looking at what we're doing well and what we can improve on. And I just think that that's the spirit of this district, and when we don't hit something and we see numbers declining, we dig in and figure out why. And I also want to remind parents, like, that's why testing is really important, and you, you know, parents kind of complain, kids complain, oh, we have to do these standardized tests, but that's why, is so we have data as a district to be able to evaluate how we're doing and compare it year to year, so just wanted to make those comments.
Great, thanks, Sandra. Great point. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item six dot one, Policy Review, and Superintendent Lennox.
Yeah, actually, tonight is truly a review as part of the board's ongoing work. Tonight, we're bringing you the four policies that come from the BA series and the seven policies from the SL series, which you've all had a chance to, to review. I know we, we've taken a look at those individually and then collectively at the work session, went through all of those last week. Right now, based on those reviews, there are currently no recommendations to make any adjustments to those policies, so no real action for the board tonight, but just we want the public to know, we remain on that three-year annual schedule where we review all of our policies on a continuous basis. So the review date for these policies will be update, updated to reflect today's date, and all of them, as always, are on our website and will be updated and posted there.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
All right, seven dot one, Review, Update, and Refresh District Health, Safety, and Security Plans. So we would like to welcome up Darren Johnson, Executive Director of School Management. Hi, Darren.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a report on this year's goal related to health, safety, and security. So I'm going to begin this evening by just reviewing what that goal statement is. This year, the district will be moving forward to implement the health, safety, and security improvements that were initially identified during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. This year's focus is a, a, a common use of the Standard Response Protocol, which otherwise is known as SRP, as well as the Standard Reunification Method, SRM, as outlined in the I Love You Guys Foundation. Just a couple of different pieces with this. This is the second year of the goal, so initially, we began with this work last year, twenty-two, twenty-three. You'll remember that that Standard Response Protocol is a way for us to identify common language that can be used across our system, and some of those key markers of that was hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. So that is common language that's used throughout our schools when we need to identify and direct people to certain actions in our school buildings. I also want to remind everyone, too, that a lot of the information in the presentation tonight is summarized in the summer of two thousand twenty-three version of School Talk. So for those people that are wanting more information, that is definitely a place where they can get some of that information. So as we move forward, the presentation tonight is broken into three subcomponents, so a part on health, a part on safety, and a part on security. So in the health part, there are two strategies. The first of those strategies is to work with members of the Student Support Department to identify examples of when the appropriate SRP language would be used with health-related events. So this is a, this part of the goal is in progress, so conversations with those Student Support Departments across the district is going to help us to create a table. So for example, if something happens in a school, that we would respond in a similar way across the district. So that's very important, so once again, that we are using not only the common language, but we have common expectations as to how we're going to respond. The second strategy, under the health subcomponent, is working with building and program staff to ensure that appropriate staff will be trained in administering opiate antagonists, and that a supply will be available at every site. So this is part of statutory work now across all schools in the state, but I can report that naloxone doses can now be found in each of our school buildings. The additional part is the training part, and the first phase of that training, I can report, is complete, and that includes training of our school nurses and healthcare specialists. The second phase of that training is our school crisis teams, and that is in the process. So we are pleased to say that we will have a lot of people in our system that will be able to administer opiate antagonists if needed in our schools. Next, talking about safety, there are six strategies as it relates to this subcomponent. The first, targeted professional development for lead district administrators related to the best practices of school safety and security. So this is extremely important, that we have people in our system that understand what are current best practices as it relates to this work. So sometimes it can be conferences, it can be workshops, it can be meetings with people from other school districts, as we work to make sure that we understand what are the best and most up-to-date responses that we can do in this field. So that is the first strategy that we're, we're continuing work on, but the goal part has been completed. The second, district staff will work with local law enforcement agencies to establish expectations regarding the use of SRP and SRM. So our work with the three different police departments and, and school safety, our, community safety departments that we have, Ramsey County, Mounds View, and New Brighton, those meetings are, are ongoing, so we meet in a formal way, quarterly with our police departments and our, our, our public safety departments, and then in an ongoing way, Mike Schwartz, who is part of our staff and really focuses on our relationships with SROs, has those meetings on a far, far more ongoing basis. So once again, formally, we meet quarterly, but his communication in relation to the strategy is weekly. Next, Training of Site Administrative Teams in the Use of Standard Response Protocol. So this has been a big part of our work, as we're making sure that our schools have the information they need to roll this out to staff. So formally, this training occurred on August seventh during our back-to-school workshop week, and then, once again, rolled out to the staff themselves on August twenty-eighth to the thirty-first. The next, participation in a standard reunification method community drill, initially was set for this fall, is going to be delayed in, in the spring until we can make sure that we can roll that out in a little bit more of a detailed manner. So we can look for more information coming in the spring, and I definitely will keep the school board informed, as we will likely need volunteers to help us make sure that that drill of standard reunification method is conducted appropriately. Next, working with site administrator, site administrators to oversee practice drills. This is an onsite strategy, so Mike Schwartz, again, working with principals and other admin teams in our schools to make sure that we are using appropriate common language during those drills. Those drills have already begun, and I can tell you that not only are there formal drills that we're working on, but sometimes there are events that cause additional practice. So for example, we had twice in our middle schools this fall already, when we had power outages, which caused us to use the hold direction, and we were able to see those, those actions in place, and I can tell you that it worked very well. We were very pleased with what that looked like in, in those fall drills, so to speak. Finally, working with schools and programs to complete an environmental scan that will ensure the implementation, common use of signage, classroom signs, hallway posters, staff badges, et cetera. This is something that is absolutely continuing, but it's nice to see that we're rolling it out, not only in our actions, but also in ways that are going to support students in some of those things like signage, posters, et cetera. Finally, under the security subcomponent, there are three, three strategies that we are focusing on. The first is implementing a consistent door magnet protocol to help ensure that doors will remain locked but ready for immediate closure in the case of an emergency. So I brought one here today. We've talked about this in other presentations here at the school board and district administration, but essentially, this magnet, when inserted in the jam, allows the door itself, the lock itself, to remain locked, but because this is here, does not allow it to engage with the, the, the jam piece. So these, like I said, the doors always remain locked, and we are able to have anyone, teachers, staff members, paraprofessionals, could be substitutes, making sure that we can make that move quickly if we're needing to lock and have that door closed in a very quick instant. Next, updating the procedures in which employees and visitors are granted access to district buildings. So this is a committee that we have that talks about key fobs and locks and keys, badges. This is all part of the work that we're doing with this committee, so this committee is starting its work again, met earlier this week, and we will continue our work to make sure that this aspect of security is something that we can feel confident in. And finally, this is one that is kind of crossover with technology, but we worked with our vendor FR Secure to provide training to district leaders regarding best practices related to cybersecurity. So as people know, this is not just work that we are needing to do with the safety of human beings, but it's also work that we are doing to make sure that we are being safe with data. So these are all the different strategies that we are working to implement this year as it relates to that DOP goal of health, safety, and security. Finally, I just want to acknowledge there's a lot of people that are part of this DOP goal and the work that we are doing to help to keep our school safe. First, Mike Schwartz, who's the Risk Management Coordinator, Principal on Special Assignment, District Executive Team, there definitely is a lot of overlap with the work that we do with these goals and making sure that we are all on the same page here in-house at the DC. School administrative teams and staff are also a big part of this work, principals, associate principals, deans, office staff, definitely are all part of this goal, district directors, and as well as local police, public safety departments. This is obviously not a one-person job, a lot of people that are working to make sure that this is correct work, and this is work that we can be proud of and confident in. So that is the, the update that I have for you this evening.
Great. Any questions for Darren? And again, this is a topic we've discussed a lot in our work sessions. So Darren, thank you to you and the others for all of your work on this. All right, next up, eight dot one, Updates. So we'll start off with AMSD Legislative, Jim.
Okay, the last AMSD meeting, we had a presentation from Katie Pikel, who's at the U of M, Ed, School Education, and she gave an interesting presentation on principals and their ongoing challenges post-COVID. Where I spend a lot of my time, as we're working on draft legislative platform, position papers for the legislature, you know, we're looking at, you know, we, last session, we got an increase, we're going to have an increase based on inflation, but we'd like to get two percent above the formula, we've got a safe school aspect that we're going to be lobbying for, and, you know, our, our favorite pay for all the mandates that we've been working on for most of my adult life. So anyways, that's what we're up to, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Nine sixteen, Sandra.
At our last meeting, we had a presentation on the auditory oral related and itinerant services and assistive technology, and it was very interesting, and just to kind of understand a little bit, kind of the, the breadth of the nine sixteen offerings as it relates to auditory oral program. They serve kids ages eighteen months through five years old who are deaf of hard, or hard of hearing, the listening and spoken language skills to maximize learning using their personalized hearing technology. And with this technology, they, nine sixteen also has like a library, so member districts can, can, if they want to try out certain technology, they can check it out and see if it works for the student before they would actually they can check it out and see if it works for the student before they would actually make purchases. So it's kind of a nice, that's kind of cool. We also had a presentation at the 916 meeting on the world's best workforce. And that was the first presentation that 916 had had on the world's best workforce, because intermediates had not developed those plans, because they were previously seen as an extension of the member districts, because those are our students, right? But for some reason, they, we need to do it this year. So we had a presentation on that. Yeah, that's about it.
Great. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item 9 dot 1, School Board Member Reports. Does anyone have anything to share?
I just wanted to commend all the students that were here tonight. It's so fun to hear about all the activities and see the connection for the students. I made my rounds, having former drama students in my family, attended Irondale's Beauty and the Beast last weekend, or two weekends ago, and then the musical at Edgewood was Mean Girls. I attended that last Friday night, and then attended Curious Savage at Moundsview High School on Saturday. And it's just so fun to see the full crew, the cast, everyone involved, the staff members who work with these students day in and day out, and to see our own high school grads come back and serve in those roles. The director and assistant director at Moundsview are both grads of our district. And so it's fun to see, well, actually, the Irondale Drama Director is also a grad. I can't leave Janet out. So it's just fun to see those people come back and serve in our community and keep, you know, working with our students.
Nice. Thank you.
Keeping on the theme of the drama department, Sunnyside is putting on their first play since COVID, so that will be coming soon. I can't remember the title. It has something to do with the power going out, and the children don't know what to do without their electronics, and then the grandparents telling them about board games. So it should be fantastic. There's also a band concert at Edgewood on Thursday at 6:00 PM, always a good one. And then the Sunnyside PTA is putting on Turkey Bingo this Friday at 6:00. So you could stop by Sunnyside, win a turkey, play some bingo, 6:00 on Friday.
Great.
Well, I attended a wonderful meeting of the Valentine Hills PTO, and they had a really successful fundraiser this year, which will really lend itself to a lot of fun activities at school. I also attended Beauty and the Beast at Irondale and was just really impressed with the production, but really impressed with the community's support. I mean, really, truly, I think over 2,500 people from the community came to see the kids, and it was a really fantastic production. As a matter of fact, I sat next to a retired drama teacher from a school district up north here, and she told me that she'd seen something like 12 productions this year, and she thought that the Beauty and the Beast was her, the best one she'd seen. So that was great. But, you know, if folks want to see what's happening out in the schools, show up to a concert, show up to a play, our fine arts in this district are second to none.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Is there anything else to come before the board? We are adjourned.